Good morning Commissioners. This is the public hearing of February 17, 2015. Chair Shree Navasan. Here. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Devonshire. Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Washington.
We're going to start up with item number two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn. 178 Court Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District. Docket number 16-3310, block 297, lot 31. And this is a vacant lot and the application is to construct a new building.
Commissioner, good morning. Jared Nelson, Preservation Staff. So this is an application for a new building in the Cobble Hill Historic District located on the corner of Congress and Court Streets. Cheryl Paulson, the Architect, will take you through the presentation.
You said you were doing boards.
The presenters probably just aren't here. The presenters probably just aren't here for that. Okay, wait. Took them tight.
All we set up, Cheryl Paulson, PKSB Architects, representing the owners of 178 Court Street at the corner of Congress in Cobble Hill. Robert Bianco from my office of Project Architect.
My background, contact.
Okay, our site is located in the Cobble Hill Historic District on Court Street, which is the eastern boundary of the district. It is at the corner of Congress Street, which is currently a parking lot, a lovely paved component of the district. And on H-003, you can see photographs of the existing site. The remainder of the block is primarily low-scale row houses with retail bases. And directly across the street is a church. Within this district, interestingly, there are not a lot of low-scale commercial buildings. On H-002 are some of the examples of other buildings in the district and outside the district, which represent the low-scale commercial-type buildings. On H-001, you'll find the historic maps and the historic photographs of the site. It's a very interesting vacant lot or parking lot because historically it was actually the play yard and the garden for an orphanage slash children's house slash parsonage, various uses, for a larger house immediately next door. That house still exists, and it is unusual because unlike the remainder of Congress Street, which is primarily red brick row houses, that is a white. So what we're proposing is a two-story and cellar commercial building, essentially full lot coverage. This is a plan of the cellar on A-100. On A-1, the proposed ground floor plan showing the two exit stairs exiting on both sides. And then fairly clear retail frontage on Court and on Congress. On A-102, the second floor, again with a clear retail space, and the roof plan with stair and elevator bulkhead, two mechanical units, and two sky lights. The space has been laid out to allow for it to be rented either as a single retail tenant or for two retail tenants, to allow for the market flexibility. And as far as we know, there has not been a building on this site before. So this is the elevator at Congress, of the Court Street frontage, the church, which is brownstone across the street, the lot that we're proposing the new building for, and the adjacent row houses, which all have commercial bases which have not entirely a 100% degree of historic infill, but were converted years ago to be primarily glass and signed. And what we're proposing is the two-story with red brick, sign bands, and a three over wide retail base divided up into two segments in terms of its delineation. This block is interesting because the two corner lots at the opposite side are wider lots, and then all of the center lots are 20-foot wide lots. And so to maintain that pattern, we're proposing to use the same rhythm in this facade. This is the entire block front at Congress to the next street, existing. Red brick row houses, the vacant lot in our proposal. The larger expanses of glass and utilized panels and the rhythm of the tripartite organization begin to scale down to the rest of the block. And in elevation, this is the Court Street elevation, this is the Congress elevation. And the lot itself is 50 by 55, so it's not a large expansive space. And we're proposing a painted steel cornice, red brick infill. Do we have our samples for it? Sample. Handy. It's not a uniform. It's a dark rosy tone, metal. And then for the base, two types. And this is also the cornice and another panel of the upper floor windows. And this is a sign band. We are not proposing the signs themselves, other than to delineate where the signage could be located. We're also proposing light fixtures at the corners and intermediate piers. And.
On Congress.
And this is a blade sign on Congress. On the side walls, the secondary façades, we're proposing to return the brick and granite. And then for the beginning of the bulkhead, a simple painted stucco, which faces the stucco wall and brick wall of the building next door. And then on the V sheets are the views. This one overall, showing the location maps. And then the existing view, looking toward the site and with the proposed building. The street configuration here is interesting because the street actually dead-ends into the facade of the building, a plus for retail site. The new kitty corner from the site and looking at the new building, there are large trees, which when we will block some of the back portion of the building. Larger scale. This is looking up Congress Street toward the buildings to the east and the new building. This is looking down Court Street toward the church and the new building. Standing on Congress, looking at the site with the new building adjacent to the central building next door, and again looking toward the church with the new building in the foreground.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. Okay, so, you know, I understand your design intent along Congress, which is to sort of break down the scale and connect to the mid-blocks. But having lived in Cobble Hill, and a long time ago, and walking on Court Streets, I mean, one thing about Court Street, as you showed us in your elevations, is, in fact, they were residential buildings and they have ground floor retail. And so in some ways, that residential character that you've talked about in Congress actually also exists on Court Street, particularly above the second floor. So I guess my question is, did you think about whether that design approach that you've used on Congress should also be used on Court? So that's one question. And the second question is, has to do with where you place your signage. And I understand that's maybe a placeholder, but given that Court Street does have ground floor retail and probably a signage pattern over there, and have you thought about how to extend that or how does it integrate with that?
I'm gonna.
Okay.
It's a bad, it's diverse.
Okay.
On the signage question, and I'm just for our historic photograph. Interestingly, historically, the adjacent, and the sign does not exist anymore, but the building immediately adjacent had a very large, once the site was a parking lot, had a very large arrow for Park Here Now kind of delineation. Not to say that's from the period that this district is designated for, but over time there were a variety of locations for signage. But more importantly, within the context of the overall neighborhood, we did look at this block and we thought that it was important to maintain the bigger expanses of glass at the ground floor, to break this up into the tripartite organization, but also use this corner location as an opportunity to relate to the scale of the church across the street. So it is, in our minds, a transitional site, both on Congress and on Court. We don't have the traditional row houses on Congress immediately adjacent. We have a larger scale house with a three-part facade. And then on, we have this row of loving houses, sorry, the row of former houses and now retail. But we also have the church across the street, and that does, there is an opportunity here to use this site, which is a transition.
Use this more as a transition.
You go ahead.
Yes, Fred.
I know we have a lot of work like people.
Yes.
Well, I've never lived here, but for 42 years, I've lived pretty close by. So I have a similar kind of question, I guess. It's about the context and relating and so forth. The height of the building is almost what a three-story, a typical three-story building is, but yet it's a two-story building. And I've heard you, and in particular relating to the building on Congress Street, the anomaly, really, but it's there and it's something to relate to. But something about having a two-story building the size of three or even almost four-story buildings within, on both sides of this block, means that your building is somehow strangely proportioned and scaled oddly, I think, to me at least. And the windows, particularly on the second floor, and I'm sure you're leaving FAR, aren't you? But anyway, that's neither here nor there. You are. And usually, you know, you're living, there are two or three floors of apartments, which are astronomically expensive these days, so I'm trying to understand the developer's mode, but again, not our problem. But it would seem to me that maybe two smaller floors with smaller windows. I mean, your windows on the second floor are about double the square footage of a typical window on both blocks that you're relating to. So those are just comments, not so much a question, just a comment. But I wondered how you rationalize those things.
It's a very good question. The site is residential with a commercial overlap district. And under the commercial zoning, you're only allowed to go up to 30 feet with a two FAR coverage for the lot. So our clients, looking at the lot, looking at the scale of the recent buildings, felt that this was a more logical opportunity for a creative development, especially in the context of the commercial improvements, the retail improvements specifically, that are happening along the street. As I said, the site is a very small site, 50 by 55. It does not lend itself to a ground floor retail and residential floors above. The retail would not have the sort of height that a typical retailer would be looking for, along with the residential floor to floor heights that would be comparable. Plus, you would have multiple stairs and elevators and other things, and have very little left over. And the retail tenants that are looking at this, and again, in the context of the larger church building across the street, we felt that the massing was clearly in scale with the rest of it. The second floor windows, we began by first breaking it up into the three and then starting to delineate some millions on the second floor to begin to break it up. And as we turn the corner, we introduced these other panels to begin to relate first to the sizes of the openings and windows on the mansion house immediately placed. It's an interesting site because it is a corner lot. It was never a building with houses or retail or any kind of building. It has been a parking lot for a very long time. And we felt that even though it is a different scale, it is a scale that is appropriate, by the way, that it relates to the church across the street and the house.
All right, other questions? Yes, John.
Do you have any examples of other corner commercial buildings nearby?
Rob.
Two-story commercial spaces.
Yeah, that's what I was.
They're interesting.
This is directly across.
Which page is that on?
This is H-002. And this is outside the historic district, across the street, but it's the type of commercial building in the area. Then this one at Court and Pacific, which is within the district, is a three-story commercial building and is the lighter tone stucco. The Harris Court Theater on Court Street is again one, two, three stories with a petal-minted sort of parapet. And then, of course, the Brooklyn Savings Bank at Court and Atlantic, which is a very grand building, has a more rusticated appearance and is primarily one-story. So if we were to just look at these, we would have brought forward something in a lighter color, which we felt was jumping a little too far, but that the opening scale that we're proposing is in line with these, which are not adjacent directly, but are within the district.
All right, other questions? Okay, yes.
What was the point of the panels? And why are the panels up on one floor and down on the other? What is, and are they different materials? They're different colors?
They are different materials. The panels, the panels on the bottom are in darker colored stone. And the panels that are within windows themselves are metal. And this is actually, we have a long conversation with the Cobble Hill Association and.
Just two buildings, and you explained it as being in scale with the other buildings on that side.
We did explore introducing a joint at this point to delineate subdivision. The joint never felt, and I'm sorry we didn't bring that sketch, it never felt like it was landing in a good spot to make it the length of anything, so we took it out. But we did explore.
Just one last question. What's on top, so the bulkhead that we're looking at?
The bulkhead is.
Is long on that side, right?
Yes. The bulkhead is housing the stair bulkhead, which is now required by code, and the elevator override.
And on the other elevation, it goes across the whole?
It goes across. And it's, because it's most visible from the intersection kitty corner, we pushed the whole bulkhead back as far as possible, so it's against the lot line wall.
Right, but just to, on that issue, it's against the lot line wall, but it's not against the lot line wall along, what was that?
Perpendicular to Court Street.
Right. Right, is that because just you have to have egress and allow you to sort of connect outwards? Because you could shift the whole bulkhead further back to the corner.
Oh.
To this corner.
Rob, can you explain why it's not?
Adjacent foundations, it's for short.
Okay, so adjacent foundations, meaning that it would require deeper foundations of that corner, adjacent to the building?
If we pushed.
If you pushed it because the core is taking the weight? Okay.
Could you have sloped it, the stair part?
Yes, we could slope that.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, I do.
The roof has to be at 30, but the parapet could get taller?
Unlike the Empire State Development Corporation requirements, this is under New York City zoning, so the height limit is the roof and the parapet is allowed to exceed.
So it can exceed, my question is, can it get taller still than what you've got?
No.
Which is, so that means that that.
I mean, if it did, and it became too high, then the roof would count as floor area under the zoning, and that would not be.
But what is that number? You've got it at three and a half, about three and a half feet above the roof. So how much taller could it get, the parapet?
Isn't it three feet six or something?
No, no, to count as floor area, I think it has to be five feet.
For it to not count as floor area?
For it to not count as floor area.
Has to be less than that.
What?
Five feet approximately.
Four feet six or something?
It is.
This was what we went through on the Puck Building, where the parapet's actually counted as floor.
And I think we've seen some cases over here as well. Are there any other questions for now? We can take testimony. Barbara Zay.
Good morning Commissioners. Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HDC commends this design for its overall sensitivity of scale and materials. We do ask, though, that since the storefront will be considerably taller than those of its Court Street neighbors, the signage be incorporated into the glass transom rather than on an additional sign band above. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, no more speakers. Ms. Paulson, you want to come back up here? Okay, so, yes.
If I could respond. We did see the Historic District Council's comments on their emails that they forwarded, and we did consult with our clients regarding the shift of the location of the signage, and they said they would vastly prefer, based on their marketing studies, that the signage remain in the location.
All right, I think, you know, when I was asking you about the signage and how it relates, I was sort of getting at the same issue, which is if you put it lower, it actually connects. And I can understand that you want to have your retail floor taller than what was there for the others because they were sort of incorporated. But I know that's the preference, but I feel it's almost, I don't know, it feels like it would be able to address your client's concerns of visibility, but actually feel more integrated into the storefront. So you may want to think about that. Okay, and the other thing, just going back to, I think, a comment that Roberta made and I made, and I think it relates to what Fred was saying as well, is just sort of somehow breaking down the scale even along Court Street, it is at a very, actually, it has a lot of visibility because it's at the intersection. Right? And I think that one could argue that that's a sort of a pivotal location, as you noted, that it sort of transitions to an institutional building to the south. But it also seems that one could address it very similar to the way you've addressed it on Congress, and it may just, you know, the fact that you've broken down, yes, something like that, you could do at least on the second floor or, I don't know, just a suggestion to try and break down the scale.
I appreciate that comment. And.
Okay, all right. Yes.
Comments?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I feel kind of uncomfortable with the approach. I think that the materials and colors seem very appropriate, but they're appropriate to the residential district. And it's a corner building, so I think you can do a lot with it. I don't have any problem with a commercial building. And I feel like if we're going to try to fit into the residential sense, that you'd have to go further. Like you need a corner, so you need some detailing, the windows on the top are too large. On the other hand, if you came in with a really commercial approach, so to speak, and the committee board might have been much less happy with that, or the local association, but I think that you could go, you know, you could go to a more commercial look. And that's a question, I guess, for the district. It's near the edge, though, and it's, it is a corner building. But, in other words, some of the examples that were really more commercial. So I kind of feel it's going, it's neither one nor the other. If it were, if it's to fit in with the residential, I feel like the windows on the top are really too large and it's too plain and almost commercial industrial in character, I just feel it's not fitting in well in the vocabulary that it's chosen, whereas, I don't have any problem with the lower floor. But I could, I could, I think, look at something that was much more just a commercial approach that was, the whole building was that. So that's what's troubling me. It's kind of not going completely one way or the other.
I think that, I agree with that comment. There's a, it's, I'm looking at H-002 and H-003, it seems like the proposal is neither fish nor fowl. You know, it's not a dramatically different commercial building anchoring the corner. But on the other hand, it kind of starts to mimic what happens in, at Court and Amity, which is right on the other end of the block, but it doesn't quite go far enough. I mean, not that it has to be identical to that, but if you're going to go with that red brick look, it needs more, it needs a cornice of some sort, and the windows seem to be disproportionate. And that said, if you wanted to go, you know, completely different, I wouldn't see a problem with that either, but it seems like it's caught in between.
Right, and it seems like that the, right.
I'm only laughing because our first presentation to our client was a more commercial design with a lighter colored facade. The openings have not changed dramatically, other than to reduce the size of placement.
Right, but I think your design philosophy and the choice of materials was, in fact, to make it more contextual to some kind of residential ground floor retail. And so you could go in a completely different direction, not completely, a different direction, but you've chosen this direction, and within this direction, it seems that there are other things you could do to take it, than to really embrace it fully. Other comments?
I sort of support what these two Commissioners have said. It's neither fish nor fowl, and I'm just sort of generally uncomfortable, I think a word that I'm going to use. It's not that it's bad, it's just, I don't know, it doesn't seem quite appropriate yet. And I guess that's what we have to find. And I'm thinking it's neither fish nor fowl, without trying to give you specific comments that you could take back and do that, and we check the box. I think this is an opportunity, because of the corner, to make an interesting and contemporary building.
Yes, Roberta.
I agree.
I mean, I agree. I think that the other commissioners have been very, and if we were trying to follow the philosophy that's expressed on one side, where you really make them, in terms of scale, try to fit in, then you really should do it on the other side. But if you're trying to not really relate to this, because you're really trying to relate to the larger scale church across the street, then this could be okay, and that's an approach, but then it needs to be, I guess, done completely, so that it's relating to that scale, and you're not trying to relate to the scale. So I think it needs to be...
Other comments?
I agree that the greatest discomfort I have, actually, is with the sort of simple cap flashing on the facade, which is much more industrial than anything else.
Right, any other, this, okay, sorry, go, yes.
The comment about the parapet, if we were to increase the parapet by, to be able to play a little bit, if I'm asked of a better technical term, with the parapet and other elements, that's a direction that would be appropriate to follow. I think that we can take these comments back to our clients, and I think there's a lot of correction.
Right, and I think, you know, for me, I think, you know, it is, the shape and form on this site, you know, it fits in, whatever way you treat it. To me, it seems that if you actually just take into consideration the comments that were made, including trying to sort of establish the corners, which relates better to the other buildings, and also break down the scale of the windows, I think I'd be able to, you know, if you would agree to that, for me, I feel that we could get to, you know, to appropriate, for me, I'd be able to sort of accept that as being appropriate. So you can come back, I mean, I don't know what the other commissioner's saying, so in other words, we could recommend that they work with staff to do that, because we know where it's going. But is that okay? I don't know if you want to actually go back and discuss it with your client. Come back.
We've spoken to the clients multiple times, you'll follow whatever direction the commission is giving.
Does that, yes, Jared?
I think with the new building, probably with this kind of modification, it should come back.
We should bring it back. Okay, that's fine.
I agree with the fact that we've been given a choice of remaining very contextual, reducing the openings, or remaining commercial, and trying to really make it an appropriate building that fits with the community.
That seems fine.
Can I just add?
Yes, Fred, yes.
I just said, of course, didn't want to design your building, and I don't, but, but if you keep in this same kit of parts, let's say, or this same direction, and we've heard several other directions that could work, I'm just thinking that maybe it's all about the detailing then, and maybe more inventive or interesting detailing in a brick and maybe the jams or steel or something, I mean, just more interesting and a more contemporary feel to the detailing might also help.
Can I ask a specific question? Because one of the things, we did look at steel jams, and our client is supportive of adding a deeper recessive windows to the front wall, so that's not an issue. One of the things that has gone back and forth is the reentrant corner detail, and at one point, that detail was a steel element, so it was more glass house rather than brick.
Well, I don't know. Anyway, it's dangerous territory.
Right, it's, right.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can close the hearing. Now we're going back to...